Regular meeting number five will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Columbus City Council meets tonight for the purpose of conducting the business of our city. The citizens of our community have chosen them and entrusted them with the awesome responsibility of legislating for the city so that progress can be achieved and order preserved in our great city. Today's break in the weather reminds us that springtime is coming and with it the rebirth of nature. We remember especially in prayer those who suffer because of the cold and the inclement weather, especially the homeless, the economically disadvantaged, who look not only to this council, but to all the citizens of our city to help them in their need. We ask you to renew in the hearts of the members of this council a great love for and care for our fellow men and women, especially those who have no one to advocate for them or advance the cause of their betterment. Finally, Lord, we ask that you will bestow on the members of our council and all the citizens of our city a renewed determination to work together for the common good of all the citizens of Columbus so that all of us may enjoy security, sustenance, and the opportunity to grow and develop in this special section of the world in which we live. May your blessings always be on the city of Columbus. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? So moved. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginther. In light of Black History Month, I had the real pleasure of attending the annual Department of Human Resources-sponsored event around Black History Month. I can tell you without equivocation how excellent that was. The young people were extraordinary, and I enjoyed the presentations. It really was so meaningful in so many ways to all that attended, but certainly to our larger community, this city and this nation. I've asked Director Christie if he would just share a few comments, and then we'd like to ask Dr. Richardson and guests to come to the podium.
Thank you. Councilman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, good evening. First allow me to thank you for your attendance at both the reception that we had for Marion Wright Edelman and for the Black History Month program on Saturday afternoon. As you know, Dr. Melvin Richardson is the point person and the coordination of all of our Black History Month programs. We've had nineteen now, and he typically does an outstanding job of coordinating that entire activity. But I would venture to say that this year he outdid himself. Being able to engage one of the nation's foremost experts on childhood education, a world-renowned children's advocate, who was also the founder of and president of the Children's Defense Fund, was in and of itself a major coup. Mrs. Edelman, while I think complimenting Mayor Coleman and President Ginther and many others who have initiated a number of initiatives particularly focused on pre-K education, she truly challenged all of us and painted, I think, a very vivid picture of the work that's ahead of us on the local, state, and national level. The program, however, vividly demonstrated the kind of talent that so many of our young people in this community, and also the quality of the work that's being done in a number of our schools, both public and private. While there's still much work to be done, I believe we saw on display on Saturday evidence of what it is that we truly want to emulate and to replicate in so many of our education systems throughout this community, and for that, we're extremely grateful. Allow me the opportunity, Councilman Craig, please, to afford Dr. Melvin Richardson the opportunity to provide just a bit of an overview of Saturday's activity and to come forward and approach the microphone and do that at this point.
As Dr. Richardson and guests are coming, I think your point was clear. It wasn't just simply a point of gesture or presentations.
Right.
But we talked about issues, I know President Ginther, of infant mortality, the implications of that, and also many of the other issues regarding pre-K and the significance of young people needing to get what the importance of not only education, but what our parents, what we are all doing to ensure that our families and our children really are equipped with the kinds of skills necessary to compete in our world environment. Dr. Richardson, you have served. The mic is yours.
Thank you, sir. President Ginther, Councilman Craig, other members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce Ms. Natalie Washington-Williams, who served as our departmental personal hostess to our keynote speaker, Mrs. Marion Wright Edelman, and she did a wonderful job of making her feel comfortable in extending the hospitality of the city to such a distinguished person. And so I ask her if she would accompany me here for this honor. And certainly, it is an honor to be recognized this evening for putting on and bringing together a program that honors our young people. We had representatives from the Columbus City Schools, from St. Charles, from Columbus Schools for Girls, from even Worthington School Elementary Children, who did wonderful historical presentations. We had the Urban Youth Orchestra, String Orchestra. We had even hip-hop, and we claim that even that might be used as an instrument to motivate our children to learn because most children understand hip-hop. So we had a variety of things, a whole gamut of talent that was on display, but it was easy from our standpoint because we cared about the children. We do care about our children, and I asked at that presentation if we could have a celebration of heart, celebration of our love for our young people in our community. And as the mayor said so strikingly and vividly, we must keep fighting for our young people. We had someone come and visit us who pointed out some of the things we might do in terms of early education efforts, seeing that no child is left behind and so forth, and I can sense that Columbus has the spirit and the commitment to see to that, and I am encouraged as an individual in that regard. And I'm going to stop talking now, and I'm going to ask Natalie if she would like to say a few words.
I would like to just say thank you for allowing me to participate in the Black History Program, as well as be the assistant as far as personal hostess to Mrs. Edelman. It was a great honor to be under such a legacy, and as Dr. Richardson said, it's time for us to continue to walk it out at this point.
Well, so well said. Young people are 100% of our future, our expectations. We can't just talk about it, but we've got to be about it and get the work done. And so it's my view that Black History is every day because we have young people contributing every single day to make our nation better. So, but thank you so much. I wanted to certainly highlight not simply the program, but what our city employees do day in and day out to make our city better. Thank you so much for your service and your work.
Thank you, sir. It's a true honor. Thank you.
That is all that I have, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein, President Protam Miller, Councilmember Mills.
Yes, tonight I have ordinance resolution 0013X-2013 to declare February 7, 2014 to be Wear Red Day in Columbus and to raise awareness of cardiovascular disease as the leading cause of death among women. I'm going to ask Ms. Jennifer Shealy, and I'm also going to offer my apologies if I messed up to her last name, and C.C. Harris, of the American Heart Association, to please approach the podium. Cardiovascular disease is a leading cause of death among women, and this is just one of the tools that American Heart Association uses in addition to their life check that can help women learn about their own personal risk for heart disease. I'm going to turn the podium over, but just before that, I'm going to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. Ladies, if you could please not only educate us, but educate the listening audience in terms of importance of Wear Red today, I thought I'd comply and send a message myself, but I think you all could provide the startling stats that we need that may wake up some of our listening audience and those who are here with us this evening about the prevention that's necessary and the needs that face 50% of our population in the city of Columbus. Podium's yours.
Absolutely. And thank you, Councilmember Mills, and Council President Ginther, and all the members of council, and also Steve Allmiller, Assistant Director at Columbus Recreation and Parks. And thank you all for wearing red tonight as well. As a heart and stroke survivor, I am thrilled to see the council helping call attention to the number-one killer of women, heart disease, by supporting the Go Red for Women again this year. Personally, I have had nine heart surgeries, a stroke, and I am on my third Pacemaker implant, so I know firsthand the importance of living a heart-healthy life and spreading the word about this number-one killer of heart disease. Since the inception of Go Red, we have been collectively fighting this disease. I am proud to say that together we have saved the lives of 627,000 women and that's 330 fewer female deaths per day. But the fight is far from over. One in three women still die from cardiovascular disease. 90% of women are at risk for developing heart disease. It is imperative that the American Heart Association work to improve cardiovascular disease health, and that they are doing so by focusing on prevention and lifestyle changes. The truth of the matter is 80% of cardiac events in women are preventable if we are making the right choices. Going red is a great place to start. Research shows that women who go red are more likely to make healthier choices. For example, of the women who have joined the Go Red movement, 90% have made at least one healthy behavior change, and 23% more women are aware of that disease, aware that this is the number-one killer and health threat. This is a great first step to improving health and preventing a cardiac event from happening in women nationwide, and especially right here in our very own community. Another visible way to take the first step in calling attention to this deadly disease is to wear red this Friday, February the 7th, on National Wear Red Day, and now, thanks to you all, officially Wear Red Day in Columbus. I offer my heartfelt appreciation to Councilwoman Tyson Mills and the entire council for your support in creating a visual display throughout Columbus to help the American Heart Association further their efforts in stopping the number-one killer in women. Your support is truly invaluable, and from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shealy, did you have some comments?
Yes, I'd like to definitely thank you, Councilmember Mills, and the Council and President Ginther. We look forward to coming here each year and spreading awareness in Columbus about how we can improve the health of our community, especially around women. And so I really especially appreciate C.C.'s sharing her story and the courage and the, again, just helping to spread awareness and help women live healthier lives. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you all very much, and I know that Councilmember Tyson would want to share her appreciation for all of your hard work in advocating for something near and dear to her, so thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I actually do have a resolution this evening, but I also wanted to, I had a wonderful opportunity on Saturday to present a city council certificate from all the members of city council to a woman who turns 100 on February 9th. The Clintonville area community had a birthday party for her at Tim Hortons, and I found her to be absolutely fascinating, and she's been a women's advocate all over the world, and she lives here, right here in Columbus. And she walked in and talked to everybody, and I really learned a lot from her, so I would like to say happy birthday to Jacqueline Angelino, and thank you for all that you give back to the community. With that said, I would like to invite Terrence Brooks and the Vice President of Kaleidoscope Youth Center Board of Directors and Board Member Dwayne Stewart to come to the podium to accept resolution 0014X-2014 to honor and recognize the Kaleidoscope Youth Center on the occasion of their 20th anniversary. While they're approaching the podium, I would first move for adoption.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, excuse me. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
The Kaleidoscope Youth Center was founded in 1994 and is the only organization in Ohio that is solely dedicated to supporting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning youth and their allies. Kaleidoscope Youth Center works in partnership with young people in central Ohio to create a safe and empowering environment for the LGBTQ youth through advocacy, education, and support. The organization promotes and supports self-confidence, healthy, productive lives for LGBTQ youth as a transition from adolescence into adulthood. For the past three years, Kaleidoscope has been able to develop programs offering self-esteem, health, and wellness programs, and assistance with gay, straight alliances in the Columbus City Schools and Franklin County Schools, along with those in contiguous counties. Kaleidoscope Youth Centers utilizes proven youth development strategies in their after-school programs. As has been true since inception, Kaleidoscope continues to advocate for policies that help LGBTQ youth with regard to safe schools, mental health, personal development, and other important areas. As a youth service agency serving in the central Ohio area, Kaleidoscope has become a well-respected, community-based organization providing direct services to youth, training and education to youth service providers, and for important information relating to sexual orientation and gender identity issues to the community at large. From peer-to-peer programs, HIV prevention and education, to after-school programs, peer counseling services, Kaleidoscope assists LGBTQ youth in the transition to healthy, productive adults, and provides them with the necessary tools to become leaders in the greater community. Mr. Brooks and Mr. Stewart, the floor is yours.
President Ginther, Councilmember Paley, other council members and community members, we just want to say thank you for your support and for this resolution. We're excited to celebrate 20 years in Columbus. We know there's been a lot of work done, and we have you all to thank for that. This year in particular, we're excited to continue the work of expanding our reach throughout the greater Ohio area, but we know that Columbus is home, and so we're really proud of the work we've done here advocating for our youth in our center, so as well as being a part of our school communities, and so thank you for your support.
I'll just reiterate, thank you so much for your support. Now more than ever, it's most important that we support our LGBTQ youth here in Columbus and throughout the country as we see suicide and bullying rates increase, and we really appreciate the support of the council.
Councilmember Mills.
In case you wouldn't say it, I would encourage people to visit Easton and Park at the meters. I know that you are the featured charity this month, so park and park often to the community to support what a wonderful organization that is needed, even more so as the numbers do increase in suicide. So thank you for your hard work, and please, everyone, visit Easton and park at the meters.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Any announcements from our elected officials? City auditor, city attorney, Judge Barrows, anything from the court this evening? Are there any additional requests? I have one ordinance I'd like to remove from the consent action portion of the agenda in the Finance Committee 0164-2014. Are there any other requests from members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? So moved. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance 215-2014, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2750, 2757, 2880, 2951, 2960, 2963, 2964-2013, and ordinance is 1641, 4952, 6367, 69-2014. Zoning Committee ordinance 210-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 72, 73, 74, 75, 79, 117, 120, 121, 122, 123, and 124-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 178 and 191-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 21, 105, 161, and 162-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance 2902, 2947, 2949, 2954, 2957, 2961, 2978, 3008, 3021-2013. Ordinance is 1042, 44, 132, and 158-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 98, 99-2014. Technology Committee ordinance 61-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 88, 97, 140, 146, 153, 157, 163, 182, and 198-2014.
Thank you, Clerk Leavens. We do have one speaker on the consent, to speak to the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to Council Chambers. You have signed up to speak to 0198-2014, and I believe in support of that. Your chair, name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you again, once again. Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Chairman of Soli-Vacant and Abandonment Property in the North London area. I'm in favor of this as 120%. Like I said again, for lawn care service for city-owned property, again, I just want to say thank you again for continuing this amount of money, and again, I'm all for it as 120%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills.
Yes, with the exception of 2961-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Paley, President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We'll now proceed with second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. President Protam Miller will be bringing legislation forward for consideration this evening.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Finance Committee tonight, our first item is 2730-2013, in which I would like to first to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
And I would like to table this for one week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
2731-2013, I would like to first to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
And this one, I also like to table for one week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
2732-2013, first I'd like to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
And I'd like to table it for one week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
2944-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds between projects within the Safety Voted Bonds Fund to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Aggressive Mechanical Incorporated for the renovation of plumbing for the Division of Police, 120 Marconi Boulevard, to authorize the expenditure of $1,407,000 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund and to declare it an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
0127-2014, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to execute those documents approved by the Columbus City Attorney, Real Estate Division, to quit claim grant perpetual non-exclusive electrical utility easement rights to the Ohio Power Company and Ohio Corporation. Company and Ohio Corporation upon a portion of the city real property located at 2333 Morris Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43229. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend as submitted to the city clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
And last, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
President Ginther, can we go back to the consent pages, to page seven? And in that, we have 0164-2014. And in this, I would like to request the table for one week and ask for a voice vote.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills.
Yes.
Mills.
Paley, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in the Finance Committee tonight. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Protem Miller. Our next committee is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Mills will be bringing legislation forward this evening for consideration.
Thank you tonight for Health and Human Services. I have 0076-2014, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Lab Corps of America to provide laboratory testing services for various Columbus public health programs, to authorize expenditure of $56,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof, to waive the provisions of competitive bidding, and to declare an emergency. Lab Corps of America has been providing these services since 2008, and this ordinance will authorize funding of $56,000 for the period of February 1st, 2014, through January 31st, 2015. This ordinance weighs competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
That's all I have. I would like to turn the floor over to Councilmember Paley.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I have ordinance number 0077-2014, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., for APN services for the CPH Sexual Health Clinic, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $67,896 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and to pay the cost thereof, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the City Code, and to declare an emergency. I would request to table this ordinance for one week by voice vote.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills.
Obstain.
Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0078-2014, to authorize the board of health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., to provide primary health care and dental services at community-based health centers, and to authorize the expenditure of $5,700 from Health Special Revenue Fund, and to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. I'll request to table this ordinance by one week with a voice vote, please.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills.
Obstain.
Paley.
Yes.
President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, in the Recreation and Parks Committee, I have ordinance 0130-2014, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to execute those documents approved by the Columbus City Attorney, Real Estate Division, to quit claim grant perpetual non-exclusive electrical utility easement rights to the Ohio Power Company and Ohio Corporation upon a portion of the city's real property located at 1190 Hard Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43235. First, I'd like to request to amend as submitted to the city clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
0131-2014, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Michigan Playgrounds LLC, doing business as Playwork Midstates for designed bill services related to Milo Grogan Playground Design Bill Project. To amend the 2013 capital improvements budget ordinance, 0645-2013, to authorize expenditure of $32,088 and a contingency of $3,200, for a total of $35,288 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Assistant Director Og Miller comments regarding this ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman Craig, President Ginther, council members. This is a great opportunity for recreation parks. This is the, I believe it's the third Kaboom playground build we've been involved with. And I know Councilman Craig was involved in the one over at Fairwood, and the energy that comes out of these things in one day is amazing. But since we did the renovation of Milo, this gives us the opportunity to replace the playground in one day with the help of Kaboom. We've worked with, we have a meeting with the commission on the 11th to go over the design build, so they can pick out their colors and the equipment they'd like to see there. And we also have a meeting with another group that has a Kaboom grant in the neighborhood tomorrow night, and they're working with us on our project, and we'll work with them on theirs.
Well, Assistant Director Og Miller certainly want to compliment the staff at Recreation and Parks, certainly in all that they do, and Director McKnight, certainly this is an important collaborative, and will have long-term implications for our families and our children. Thank you for your comments. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
0179-2014, to authorize the Director of Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into a revenue-generating lease agreement approved by the Columbus City Attorney, Real Estate Division, with St. Stevens Community Services, Inc., an Ohio nonprofit corporation, doing business as St. Stevens Community House, to non-exclusive use operate, maintain, and manage a public aquatics agricultural program upon a portion of the city's real property located at 1701 Joyce Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43219, which is commonly known as the Maloney Park, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage. Oh, I'm sorry, that, I request a voice vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to take this from the table first. Take it from the table first, yes, sir.
Move to take it from the table. Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Obstain.
Paley.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And also, I'd like to request to table for one week, and also request a voice vote. Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Obstain.
Paley.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And then finally, 0226-2014, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks on behalf of the City of Columbus to execute an agreement with the Columbus Zoological Park Association and the Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County for the provision and maintenance of zoological park services and facilities of the Columbus Zoological Park Association, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into an agreement with the county commissioners and the Columbus Zoo for the maintenance of the zoo. The Columbus, the Zoological Park Association has asked the Franklin County Board of Commissioners to submit a levy for the provision and the maintenance of the Columbus Zoo to voters in the May primary election. If approved, the levy would allow the zoo to build new exhibits and renovate others, construct a new animal hospital, expand the aquarium, and make other important improvements. The levy would also allow the zoo to move forward on a downtown facility that will be key to the ongoing revitalization of Franklinton and the redesign of the West Bank of the Scioto River. The agreement authorized by the ordinance, 0226-2014, would take effect upon the passage of the zoo levy in May. Assistant Director Og Miller comments regarding this legislation.
Thank you, Chairman Craig and President Ginther, council. I think that pretty well sums it up. I think the reason for it is that people, I think, are aware of it, that the city owns the property that the zoo is on, so that's the reason for the three-party agreement. Thank you.
If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you, that is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before I get into safety and judiciary and utilities, I'd like to publicly recognize and thank councilmembers Paley and Councilmember Mills for the work they did in chairing the committees and laying the groundwork for me to take over. I'm excited about these committees and working with the directors, but thank all of them for the, those two council members, Council President, for helping me learn and hit the ground running with both committees. The first in public safety and judiciary is 0106-2014, to authorize the appropriation of $300,000 from the Indigent Driver Alcohol Treatment Fund to the Franklin County Municipal Court. Judges pursuant to the requirements of the Higher Vice Code and funding the Indigent Driver Alcohol Treatment Program and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next is 0107-2014, to authorize the appropriation of $300,000 from the Electronic Alcohol Monitoring Fund to the Franklin County Municipal Court for the funding of treatment services and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Moving on to utilities. 2956-2013, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Water, to authorize the expenditure of $17.5 million from the Water Operating Fund to establish an auditor certificate in the amount of $17.5 million for the expenditures listed within the legislation, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance speaks for itself, but I believe its timeliness could not be more apparent with the issues that the Department of Utilities was dealing with, with the water supply, and how these chemicals help treat those to make our water clean and not smelling like a foul odor. So, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
2979-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer services provided for fiscal year 2014, to authorize the expenditure of $2.8 million from the Sewer System Operating Fund. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next is 110-2014. I'd like to request the table for one week by voice vote. Council President.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Obstain.
Paley.
Yes.
I do have two pieces and rules in reference, if I may proceed there. The first piece of legislation is 24-2014, to amend sections of Title I Administrative Code, Title VII Health Sanitation and Safety Code, Title XIII Refuse Collection Code, Title 31 Planning and Historic Preservation Code, Title 33 Zoning Code, Title 41 Building Code, Title 43 Plating and Engineering Code, and Title 45 Housing Code of the Columbus City Codes, in order to increase penalties for violations of these codes from a third-degree misdemeanor to a first-degree misdemeanor. We had a hearing on this. This was brought to, this legislation was brought to light after serious discussion with the community about penalties for owner-occupied, as well as rental units, that were not up to city code, and the plague that they were having in our community. And in discussion with the community, in discussion with the Department of Development and the City Attorney's Office publicly, I'd like to thank both of them, we realized that increasing the penalty will send a clear message and allow the prosecutors the ability to, the ability to use stiffer penalties to hold those folks accountable. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Councilman Klein, President Ginther, members of council. I'd just like to echo your comments and return your thanks for your help on this issue, and thank the City Attorney's Office. They've been great assistance. I've spoken to council on this a number of other times, so, thank you.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
The final piece is 144-2014, to establish community and regional commercial overlays in portions of northwest Columbus through the enactment of new sections, 3372.759, 3372.765, 3372.873, and 3372.875 of the Columbus City Codes, to amend sections, 3372.702, and 3372.802 of the Columbus City Code, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Councilman Klein. If you would indulge me, I'd like to call Vince Papsidero up to explain what we're trying to do here.
You are indulged.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Shoney. Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, members of council, we're pleased to present to council an amendment. It's in addition to commercial overlays adopted by city council a couple of years ago for the northwest part of the city. Those were done in response to the Northwest Area Plan that was adopted by council three years ago, and the Northwest Civic Association asked us to come back, take a look at some additional areas, much smaller scale, on Sawmill, on Henderson, and on Bethel, and so that's what's before you this evening, to adopt community commercial overlay and a couple of areas, and the regional commercial overlay as well. Briefly, overlays help to reinforce a walkable built environment. They also provide higher development standards, higher graphics standards, and are typically asked of us by the community to present those and to propose those to council to deal with issues important given parts of the city. So, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have regarding this particular proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Papsidero. Any questions or comments? I move, I'm sorry, we do have one speaker. It's John Ellers. If you just could identify yourself, any organizations you represent, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Ellers. I'm president of Northwest Civic. Mr. President, I'd like to express my appreciation, Councilmembers Mills and Klein, for sponsorship of this bill, also to Vince, and to the planning group in the Department of Development for their work with us and with the citizens, residents of northwest Columbus in putting together this plan. We urge your support on this. Nothing is more important to the residents of northwest Columbus than maintaining and, when possible, enhancing property values. At best, these commercial overlays, along with regional plans and area plans, define the collective vision of the community for, both by city professionals and by the residents. Northwest Civic Association looks forward to participating in the ongoing process to ensure that this collective vision becomes reality. Again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Ellers. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinance, beginning with 0093-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive with Contact Us LLC, equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld, withheld on employees for a term of five years in consideration of combined company investments of approximately $4 million related to the building acquisition improvements and the creation of 350 new full-time permanent positions. I'd like to ask Director Shoney to provide some additional information related to this ordinance. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Ginter, members of council. This is a job creation project that will create 350 new jobs within the city of Columbus. This will be out at the Mill Run Development in Northwest Columbus. This is for a call center project. We are excited about the opportunity. The other thing that's great about this is it is filling in a development that has had an empty site for many, many years. This is the old Big Bear Grocery site out there. So we're excited about the project and look forward to moving forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Shoney. And they'll be operating at 3,700 Fissinger Boulevard space that we-
Yep, so that's out at Mill Run.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0136-2014 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into multiple contracts for demolition and asbestos abatement services, to authorize a transfer of cash between funds, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $4,106,592 from the general government grant fund, to waive the competitive bidding and performance bond requirements of Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Director Shoney to add some context, but I also want to make sure that we share about some of the upcoming things we can look forward to related to land bank properties and the demolition contractors. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Ginter, members of council. Yes, this is very timely, timely legislation. I want to comment on two things. One is, this is to authorize us to use 11 different contractors. So even though it is coming in as a request to not do a bid on these, we are working with 11 different contractors. These are contractors we've been working with. So it does give us some competition and some market aspects to the contract. So we have covered that. This is to allow us to take advantage of the Moving Ohio Forward Funds that are coming through the State of Ohio Attorney General's office. We are now finally beginning to see properties coming to the city through the county's expedited foreclosure process. We got, I think John Turner told me 25 last week, and we're expecting on the order of five a day for the next several weeks. We're working toward some deadlines this spring in terms of expending money. So our team in the Land Redevelopment Office has been working very hard to get these contracts lined up so that we can tear down as many of the worst, the worst properties in the city as we can over the next few months using this money from the state.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I want to take this time to thank Councilmember Klein, the previous chair of development, for getting this program as far as, as it has reached now. And I know that this legislation will ensure a deadline is met. Beginning in February 2012, Mayor Coleman announced a program to fight the vacant and abandoned property that included a plan to aggressively target and demolish blighted structures. And again, I know that Councilmember Klein, his leadership was very aggressive in making sure that we can do all the things we need to do to continue to fight the blight in our community, understanding that this 5.8 million will help to implement the plan and hopefully the deadline for the city to expend the Moving Ohio Forward Grant Funds, May 31, 2014. And this flexibility will allow the department to reach that goal. Wanted to acknowledge that the following companies that are listed have the qualifications and licenses necessary to perform the volume of work required to meet the grant deadline, which I know that the Department of Development made sure that not only having this flexibility in the contracting to meet a deadline, but also make sure that the contracting included qualified and aggressive contractors. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0142-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a Columbus Downtown Office Incentive Agreement with Excel Freight Connect Inc. and Excel Inc. as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution 008X-2007, adopted June 4 of 2007. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0154-2014 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Daifuku America Corporation, equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of five years in consideration of investing approximately $3 million related to improving and expanding its facility, retaining 99 full-time permanent positions, and creating 80 new full-time permanent positions. Again, I would turn the floor over to Director Shoney to add some additional context to this ordinance. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Ginter, members of council. And if I can go back to the land bank demolitions, I forgot to acknowledge, as I always should, our partners in that, the Central Ohio CIC, the County Land Bank, they're working through with us on making sure that we get all that money spent, and I was permissed in not recognizing them. So to the, to the Daifuku incentive, this is an incentive to create 80 new full-time positions averaging about $67,000 a year. This project will take place out on the east side, close to I-70 and Bryce Road. We think it's a great opportunity to bring engineering jobs with an international company to grow those jobs within the city of Columbus. They are offering a full benefit package and expanding their existing facility. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I believe Councilmember Paley has comments she'd like to offer.
I want to congratulate you, Director Shoney, on this piece of legislation. That's an area that needs some economic development, and I'm happy to see it out there. Also happy to see the, the wages. They're above normal wages, and there's quite a few of them, and that's what we need. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley. This incentive, as well as the one before it with Excel, are great jobs, the kinds of jobs we're trying to attract. The Excel incentive in particular is interesting because it's for an industry that we don't typically think of as having high-wage jobs. Go back to my notes, the, the average annual salary on that one, excuse my turning of paper, is in the $60,000 to $70,000 a year range. They wanted a facility in the downtown environment because that was what they needed to attract the talent. So both of these, I think, are great incentives. A moderate number of jobs, very high wage, when you look at the Contact Us incentive, the wages aren't as high, which was of concern to us, but we looked at the project, thought we needed to do it. But we've got a really exciting amount of jobs and continuing with the jobs that we're trying to offer for our citizens in the city.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I am as glad as Councilmember Paley in terms of the industries. I know that we're doing a fine job within the city in terms of educating new engineers and having jobs located in the city of Columbus, that the students we're preparing for these jobs will be able to remain in our great city. And I know that's a focus for a lot of engineering firms in trying to maintain talent. So appreciate your work here, and I believe the annual payroll is approximately 5.3 million. I see that for the 80 new full-time permanent positions.
That sounds about right. I'm typically not very good at quoting numbers off the top of my head, but yes, 5.3, yes.
You sounded good then.[1148.08][1148.08](Laughter). Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0181-2014 to authorize the Director of Development, did I skip order? No, I skipped one, no.
Hmm.
No, okay. I'm sorry. Ordinance 0181-2014 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with the Buckeye Ranch to provide support to remodeling and opening of the West Broad Street Family Center, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $50,000 from the West Side Community Fund and to declare an emergency. I am excited to invite Nicholas Reese to the podium, and I would like for him to share a little bit about the West Broad Street Family Center and its context and what this ordinance will address. Director Reese, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, President Ginter, esteemed members of the council. Thank you very much for considering this grant. We, four years ago, took a 42,000 square foot soon-to-be vacant grocery store and have turned it into a thriving center for the Hilltop. Our building is located near West Broad Street and Hague Avenue. We run a day treatment program, and today 30 children went to school there. Approximately 60 staff members deliver outpatient counseling from that building, and we also have the U.S. Post Office, Huntington National Bank, Children's Hospital, and Domino's Pizza with us in that building. We've turned it around. So I thank you very much for considering this grant. Can I ask, answer any questions?
Councilmember Craig.
Thank you very much, Chair Mills. Director, I just certainly want to compliment you on your continued work. I had the honor of working at the ranch in my early career and with Dr. Les Bostick, who really was the forerunner and visionary with a lot of the work, but much of what you're doing now is moving the organization in a multiplicity of, of ways and for excellence, doing so much with families and children. And I certainly want to compliment your work. I'm always proud to say I've served as a member of the staff of Buckeye, Buckeye Ranch. So thank you for being here tonight.[1303.01][1303.01](Laughter).
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Mr. Reese for coming down and everything the ranch is doing. So many folks don't understand that the ranch is one of the, the last chances for a lot of kids and families before either the juvenile justice system or some last resort options. And so the ranch is so important to so many families throughout the community, and so that kids can actually get the services they need in their own neighborhood as opposed to having to go either to the main Grove City campus or other places. So we appreciate everything the ranch has done to serve kids where they are and families where they are and try to keep those families intact. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Ginter. That was exactly my question for you. If you could expand on the services that will be provided out of this location, because I think that the listening audience would benefit from hearing about the great work that I know will be necessary. And as President Ginter talked about, right in their neighborhood, and neighborhood-based care, as we know, is very effective. If you could share a little bit about the services that are provided at this location.
Sure. We primarily, the, our largest business there is the Bonner Academy at Cross Creek. It's a day treatment program for middle and high school age children from the Hilltop and from the whole city of Columbus. When they've been suspended from their school because of behavioral issues related to a mental illness, they come to school with us. So today, 30 children were there at school. We're very successful getting those kids re-engaged with their home school so they can re-enter their programs and work toward graduation. We have 60 staff members that work out of that building that offer outpatient counseling to the Hilltop area, Franklinton area children, as well as other places around the city. We offer evening counseling sessions there. And then we also have an agreement with the Shalom Zone where they use our gym in the evenings for sort of a police athletic league basketball program.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work. I certainly know that the numbers are growing in terms of the need for mental health services. So thank you for your hard work there. I'd like to take this time to educate the listening audience that this is a part of the consent order and settlement agreement between the City of Columbus and Penn National Gaming, Inc. The parties agreed to create the West Side Community Fund. Both the City of Columbus and Penn National Gaming agreed to contribute 2.5 million to the West Side Community Fund, with the first payment of 1 million to be made in 2012. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
President Ginter, that ends in my legislation in development. I'd like to move to rules and references, provided the opportunity. Tonight in rules and reference, I'd first like to present ordinance 0188, I think I'm, I skipped one, 187, I'm sorry, to amend various sections in Chapter 523 of the Columbus City Code, commercial sales license, in order to clarify the definition section as it relates to City of Columbus and privately owned properties, to reference the race event permit and to update the code per the biannual review that ensures our code is consistent with the Ohio Vice Code and constitutional. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0188 to amend Chapter 597 of the Columbus City Code, 1959, Section 597.16 relating to alarm systems and false alarms, to more clearly specify the manner in which notification of a false alarm occurrence is delivered. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0189 to repeal Chapters 511, 515, 519, 533, 537, 538, 557, 562, 571, 581, and 596 of the Columbus City Code in order to remove outdated or unenforceable code chapters from the Business Regulation and Licensing Code Title V. First, I'd like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
All of these chapters are part of the Business Regulations and Licensing Code. They have been determined to be outdated and are no longer enforced or are no longer enforceable due to preemption by state law and regulation. Hearing was held related to all of these code changes that are being presented this evening. That affects from jury auctions to automobile parking lots, motion picture films, bicycle registration, and the like. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
In the Administration Committee this evening, we have ordinance 64-2014 to comply with OPRS requirement regarding recognition, a pickup of contributions for employees covered by the management compensation plan, and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. There's nothing else to come before council this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
We stand adjourned. We do have five non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily. Regular meeting number six will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are none.
Are there any first readings to 30-day legislation?
No, there are none.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. In the zoning committee tonight, we have one item, 0174-2014, to rezone 4014 Bridgeway, Bridgeway Avenue, being 9.23 plus or minus acres located on the north side of Bridgeway Avenue, 1,000 plus or minus feet east of Johnstown Road, from our rural district to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is NV Commercial Construction. The proposed use is industrial development. It received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President, President Ginter.
Move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginter.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. There's nothing else to come before zoning this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
We stand adjourned.